... allotment per speaker. Other councils only allot three. And speakers can express their opinions, they can express the criticism, but they can't disrupt the meeting. But I had a couple of specific items. So, do you cut off a speaker when he gets loud? No. If one of the council members feels insulted by the comments, do we cut off the speaker? No. If he gives a silent Nazi salute, do we cut off the speaker? No. He shows up in a KKK costume? No. When he uses profanity? Not necessarily. But he's done when his time is up, when his five minutes are up, or if he causes disruption. Now, some of those other things I mentioned, on the face of it, that they're allowed to do that, but if by doing that they call, cause disruption, that's a different question. So, it's First Amendment right. In the city of Santa Cruz was found to have violated the First Amendment rights of an advocate for the homeless when the mayor had him arrested for giving a Nazi salute at a city council meeting. City spent $175,000 on the lawsuit and they were ordered to pay $215,000. So, you have to be very careful about cutting off speakers from their time. There's another example on the other side. This was in the city of Costa Mesa. The plaintiff, Acosta, was present at the meeting and during his public comment, he called the mayor a racist pig. Acosta repeated his comment, which prompted the mayor to cut his speaking time short by calling for a recess. And then at a following meeting, he asked members of the audience who supported his viewpoint to stand, despite a warning from the mayor not to do so. The mayor then recessed the meeting. And Mr. Acosta was escorted out of the council chambers. The court determined that the mayor neutrally and constitutionally applied the city's decorum rules to him and that it was proper to recess the meeting until the disruption could be taken care of. So, there's kind of a fine line there. So, the last bullet point here is one I want to emphasize, and that's not engaging in discussion with the speaker on non-agenda items. Okay? It's tempting to want to do that, but it's best to not do that for a couple of reasons. First, by definition, the non-agendized item is not on the agenda. So, a discussion of that item is, can be, and is most likely going to be, a violation of the Brown Act. And frequently, staff has to look into the facts of the issue because we're just getting one person's viewpoint as to what happened. So, you want to respond, I think it's best to not respond, thank them for their comments, and then staff can look into the matter and take any action that is appropriate. So, this is, Montclair is a general law city and we have the count-
Just to clarify there, Diane.
Pardon?
Just to clarify on that last bullet point there. I believe we can make real fast, general comment like-
Brief responses.
Mr. City Manager, could please look into it? Or, Mr. Speaker, can you please give us more detailed information of the issue you're dealing with? Do you have any facts you can provide staff to? I believe that's appropriate.
Sure, or as you usually do, give us your name and phone number and we'll look into that and get back to you.
And then we'll have staff talk to you more about it.
Right. Nothing wrong with those. So, we have the council manager form of government. And that means that the city manager provides the professional expertise to manage the organization on a day-to-day basis. The council, as a collective body, provides direction to the city manager. And the job of the city manager is to implement policy. So, this next slide is a direct quote from the municipal code that says, "The city council and its members shall deal with the administrative services of the city only through the city manager, except for the purpose of inquiry. And neither shall council members give orders to any subordinates of the city manager. City manager takes his or her orders and instructions from the council members only when sitting in a duly-held meeting of the city council. City or council members shall not give any orders or instructions to the city manager outside a duly-held meeting of the city council." Of course, and none of this prevents city council members from discussing matters of the city with the city manager. So, your relationship with the city manager. Touched on some of this earlier. To avoid surprises, the council and the manager should keep each other informed rather than hearing it from a third party. And sometimes the city manager has to tell you what you don't want to hear, but he's running the city and there's certain information you need to know about, whether it's positive or negative. And we've touched a little bit on this. Your relationship with staff, again, you work through the city manager only to get things done. And the staff, under the direction of the city manager, administers the policies of the council. If you do have concern over a particular staff member, then you direct that to the city manager privately, not at a publicly noted council meeting, preferably not. And a council member, again, individually, should not direct staff to initiate any action, change a course of action, or prepare any report or study, except with the approval of the city manager or by a majority of the council at a properly noticed meeting. Shifting to ethics. Here's just some general items that you participate in ethics training every two years. You all do that. That you're independent, impartial, and fair in judgment in actions. And that your deliberations and processes must be conducted openly, unless legally confidential, such as in closed session, in an atmosphere of respect and civility. So, on the fair, independent, and impartial. Certain, at times, the council, and this is true also of you planning commissioners, you act in a quasi-judicial capacity when considering a CUP or other entitlement application. You must be neutral and unbiased. You can't have a personal conflict of interest. You shouldn't prejudge the facts. And you must be free of prejudice for or against any of the parties. And allegations of bias may occur if decision-makers meet with interested parties or discuss pending applications outside the public hearing. A biased council member is disqualified from participating in a quasi-judicial hearing. So, you want to avoid being lobbied. And these meetings or discussions include emails, texts, and other communication about pending city business. And always note that these communications become public records, subject to disclosure. And that's whether they're on your personal devices or your city-issued cell phones and email addresses. So, again, due process requires council members to base their decision on the administrative record presented at a properly noticed meeting and not on any outside information obtained privately. So, a violation of the due process may invalidate the council action taken. Quickly, on the sexual harassment training. Two hours of training required within the first six months of taking office. Then it's required every two years. And it is provided by the city and can be done by Zoom or from home. So, needless to say, sexual harassment is a violation of various state laws and can expose the perpetrator and the city to civil action. Okay. So, let's talk about conflict of interest laws. So, these are the categories, and we're going to discuss each one of them. If you're disqualified from participation, if you have a contractual conflict of interest, common law bias, incompatible offices, and free or discounted travel. So, disqualification from participation. So, a public official has a financial interest in a decision if it's reasonably foreseeable that the decision will have a foreseeable and material financial effect on the official or the official's family or one or more of the official's economic interests. So, that's all set forth in the Political Reform Act that you cannot participate or in any way attempt to influence any decision in which you have a financial interest, a reason to know you have a financial interest. So, if you do, and there are some presumptions of what is material, what is a material impact. And I think we all dealt with this back when we were looking at the general plan and the housing element. If it involves, if the matter before you involves property within 500 feet of your residence, or it could be any property you own, it's presumed to be a conflict. So, there's some of those rules that make it a little easier to determine. But these are very fact-specific. And if you ever have any doubt, you want to reach out to me before the meeting, before the item is addressed, so we can discuss whether you do have a conflict or whether you do not. But if you do, it's determined if there's a material effect, whether it's direct or indirect, and it can be on the economic interests of your spouse or dependent, not just you. So, if disqualified, you may not participate or attempt to influence any potential decision-maker or advisor. At the public meeting, whenever you're meeting, the planning commission or the city council, that's kind of a three-step practice. You announce and publicly identify the conflict. You have to say what it is. Then you recuse yourself, and then you have to leave the room. Because even your presence in the audience or somewhere else can be an attempt to influence the decision. There are also contractual conflicts of interest. That's when a public official has a financial interest in a contract. Doesn't come up real frequently, at least not here. But an example of that could be if the public official is an employee of a contract provider to the city. So, the city's contracting with a contractor and the public official works for the, is an employee of that provider. That would be an obvious contractual conflict of interest. So, the general rule is there, public officials, and you're all public officials, shall not have a financial interest in any contract made by them in their official capacity. And officials appointed by the city council are deemed to have an opportunity to influence. So, what happens if you have one of these conflicts? Contract is considered void, and the public agency keeps the benefit of the contract, and the official has to repay all benefits received, plus interest. And the official may face being banned for life from holding public office. And it's also a felony. So, that's an area you want to be mindful of. So, common law bias. This is common law. Common law means it came from the original laws and such. It's not a per se statute. It's just embodied in the due process principles that require a decision-maker to be fair and impartial when you are sitting in those quasi-judicial capacities, as we said before, like with CUPs, PPDs, variances and such. So, there can be a party bias. You either don't like the person or applicant, or you're loyal to them. So, you're not real objective. It can be a factual basis. You've learned something outside the meeting that causes you to either want to approve the item or want to disapprove it. So, you have to be very careful about that. And again, the proverbial smell test. Can't put my finger on exactly what's being violated here, but it doesn't feel right. And it doesn't appear right to the general public as well. There's also the concept or the conflict of incompatible offices. You cannot hold two public offices at the same time. And if you, if there is incompatibility of office, as soon as you accept the second one, it acts as a resignation of the first one. So, here are some examples. The employee of a local agency and a city council member. Can't be both. Or a city council member and a county planning commissioner. That would be an incompatible office. Deputy sheriff and a county supervisor would be an incompatible office. Last one we're discussing tonight is free or discounted travel. It's a constitutional, California constitutional prohibition. You may not receive free or discounted travel or free upgrades from any transportation company. The acceptance of it is an immediate forfeiture of office. This does not apply to travel benefits that are available to the general public. It's just something that's being provided to you as a public official.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Just going back to the last one on the conflict of interest. And this has nothing to do with anything about Manny, but I know what he does by being on the waterboard and being on the planning commission. The waterboard's elected, right? And the planning commission's appointed, so that's why there's no conflict?
Well, the, yeah, there's no, the waterboard doesn't have any say over city business. So, it's not incompatible.
Okay. Yeah, that was just it. I mean, like I said, Manny, I just, I just, yeah, I just wanted to-
And there are some exemptions, like when Trish was on the council and Manny was on the commission. There's a specific holding that that is not an incompatible office or an inconsistency either, or a conflict. So... But if you're ever concerned about those things, that's, you know, that's when we bring them up and address, you know, address them with me so we can make sure that we're on, that you're on solid ground. I don't know why the one in front of me doesn't say "open government" at the top, like the slide does. That's okay. So, the public has a right to access agency documents and records. And they have the right to see non-exempt materials that are created as part of the conduct of the people's business. And they are entitled to see whatever has been provided to you as a council member or planning commissioner in connection with the matter before you. So, the open government laws are the Brown Act and the Public Records Act. The theory is that it promotes transparency in government that's vital to generating public trust, requires public officials to properly notice meetings, conduct their meetings openly, allow the public to participate, and allow the inspection and copying of public records. The Brown Act, I think we all know what the purpose is, is to make that transparency available to the public, that your actions are open to the public and to public scrutiny. So, meetings have to be in public and notice. So, let's talk about meetings. It's any situation involving a majority or a quorum of the public body. When those meetings occur, the public must be informed of the time and allowed to address issues at the meetings, either on, again, on agenda items or non-agenda items. Special meetings, only agenda items can be discussed. And the Brown Act applies, obviously, to the council, the planning commission committees, like the Community Action Committee applies to that. It can also apply to formal or informal meetings. And it applies to legislative bodies or to candidates, even prior to taking office. Okay, that's just setting forth the code section governing that. So, again, meeting means any congregation or consultation of a majority of the body to hear, discuss, decide, or deliberate. Just discussions, even if you're not taking action. Discussions are subject to the Brown Act. So, it prohibits seeking collective concurrence or using third parties. In the next slide, I'll talk a little bit more about that. So, serial meetings are a series of communications that result in a majority of the body's members discussing, deliberating, or taking action on a matter of agency business. So, a congregation of majority of commissioners outside a properly noticed meeting or city council members about a matter within the subject matter of their jurisdiction is prohibited. And a series of communications of any kind, and I've added including emails and text messages among a majority of members directly or through intermediaries, is also prohibited. And there's two we kind of talk about. The hub spoke, think of a wheel. So, council member A could talk to council member B. Okay, that's one-on-one, though it doesn't seem like that's a Brown Act. That's not a majority. But then council member A then talks to council member C and shares what B had to C say, and then talks to D. Anyway, that's still collective concurrence. The daisy chain is A talks to B, talks to C, talks to D, and they're all discussing. That's, that's having collective concurrence, even though the three or more of you are not in the room at the same time. Now, there are exceptions, such as ceremonial meeting, not meetings, but get-togethers, conferences, as long as you're not discussing agency business. You can violate the Brown Act at ceremonial events if you do start discussing, three or more of you do start discussing city business.
So, I have a question on that. Let's just say, like, John and I are talking about the shark at Almahoffen Park, and we're discussing something about it to be done. And then Bill and Krista talk about it also, but on their own. Now, four people are talking about it, the same thing, but we're not talking, so that's not a conflict, correct?
I think the way you're posing it, no, because there's not three of you who have been discussing it-
Yeah.
-at the same time.
Okay.
Or sharing your views. Or two of you sharing your views with the third or the other set of two.
Okay, yeah, I know it's kind of a weird thing, but I just-
Well, it can happen-
I want to know.
It can happen easily.
Yeah.
So, it's like the, the planning commission director should not email the entire planning commission about another commissioner's concern. Or any one of you shouldn't send an email to everyone saying, "I was thinking we should do this on that project." Okay? So, it can come up real, real easily on those kinds of-
Diane. In what Councilman Mendez talked about, he and the mayor, let's say, talked about the shark at the Almahoffen Park. And I don't know what they're talking about, but I walk over, hear them talk about it, and interject. That becomes city business at that point, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So, you really have to be on your toes. It can very, you know, unintentionally happen.
Or we're at a conference, and there's a speaker on a certain subject, and like, "I want that in Montclair, let's do it." And I tell Xavier, "That's a great idea, let's do that in Montclair." And I tell the same thing to Bill, "Let's do that in Montclair. We want the same thing to happen here." That'll be a violation, even though we're at a conference.
Yes. So, this is one-
Sorry, while we're on the topic, I just had a question. So, what if I wanted to give the mayor a heads-up that I plan to request an item to be agendized? Would that fall within the Brown Act-
If you ask-
-if he were to then tell somebody else that I made that request?
Yes.
Okay, simply talking about the planned request?
Yes. Or even continuing a meeting, rescheduling it. That's city business. I know those seem very minor and procedural, but technically, I think those could be considered a violation.
Good to know. Thank you.
Did you guys understand that?
And you could just agendize it at a council meeting. If there's something you want agendized, you could mention it tonight to be brought up at the next council meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Need three, three members to concur.
And just a note, I didn't bring my phone up here. I have no idea what time it is.
6:21.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Page 35.
We'll be fine. There's only 46. So, this is, this slide is one I want you to especially note about social media. I'm not a social media person. It doesn't come naturally, or I just don't have time or never gotten into it. But obviously, it's a big thing these days. So, it's okay to use social media, but the platform must be open and accessible to the public. Open and accessible to the public means that members of the general public have the ability to access and participate, free of charge, in the social media platform without the approval by the social media platform or a person or entity other than the social media platform, including any forum or chatroom, and cannot be blocked from doing so, except when the internet-based social media platform determines that an individual violated its protocols or rules. So, unless a person commenting violates whatever the protocols or rules, they have the right to participate. So, they, you post something, they can criticize it. So, the second bullet point. You can use the social media platforms to answer questions from the public, provide them with information, or solicit information from them regarding a matter within the council's jurisdiction. So, you can do that. However, council members may not use any social media platform to discuss among themselves official business. And, well, let me say the next part. A member is prohibited, a member is prohibited from responding directly to any communication concerning a matter within the council's jurisdiction that is made, posted, or shared by any other council member. Now, what's interesting here, concerning social media, a single contact between two of you is a violation, not just a majority. Okay? It's unique to the social media. But that's, you can look at that code section. It's very clear on that. In fact, I was going to actually read that. And that includes likes and emojis. So, a thumbs up, you've just, and you, and you give another council member's comment a thumbs up. Now, if it's saying "happy birthday," okay, that's not within the jurisdiction of the city. But again, we've just been discussing how broad within your jurisdiction can be construed. So, discuss among them- So discuss among themselves, straight out of the code, out of the statute, means communications made, posted, or shared on an internet-based social media platform between members of a legislative body, including comments or use of digital icons that express reactions to communications made by other members of the legislative body. So you can use social media as set forth in the second bullet point, but I just wouldn't communicate with-
Well, let me ask.
Anyone.
I get, I'm on there all the time, and people. So if I went on social media and I said, "I oppose an item on agenda for Monday night." I say that.
Okay.
I'm not a violation of the Brown Act, I just, I just put my opinion there.
Right.
I'm fine.
Yes.
Let's just say Xavier comes in and puts thumbs up, doesn't say anything, he just puts a thumbs up, and all of a sudden now, there's two of us. And of course, Carissa is on that same site there, and she can see what my comments were, Xavier put thumbs up, and she knows, that's where the serial, this is where the problem comes.
No, the problem comes up when Xavier gives you the thumbs up.
Yeah. As opposed to, "Hey Xavier, recall, I call him on the phone, and he says, "Hey, I'm going to oppose this, yeah, I agree." Okay. That's between him and I, nobody knows about it. Social media, everybody knows what you're doing if they're on it, basically.
Right.
Including your council colleagues.
It's, it's an exception to the, it takes a majority of you to violate the Brown Act.
Yeah.
It's an exception to that rule when you're dealing with social media.
So it's been my past practice, when people do ask me a question about an issue among the council, want my position, what I tell them is that, is I can't comment, it's Brown Act. I would suggest, if you have an opinion on it, please contact the city manager or city clerks with an email, or come to the council meeting and speak your mind, but I can't say anything about it.
Well, that's, that's-
That's what I say, if you have any questions, I'd maybe help you find answers to questions, or I could just someone to answer the question for you, but go ahead, sorry.
That's a good practice, yes. Consequences of not complying with the open meeting requirements, all those things we've been talking about. The decision can be nullified, there can be criminal sanctions, there can be, as indicated in the third bullet point, other measures that the DA or other interested party can take. And there are attorney's fees and costs that may be awarded to those who successfully So there are exceptions, authorized closed sessions, individual contact with constituents, can certainly, certainly do that. And certain public meetings, we kind of touched on that earlier, provided there is no discussion of specific city business. This is simply agenda posting requirements. We have to provide a reasonable, reasonable description of what we are planning to take action on. Regular meetings, it has to be posted, the agenda 72 hours before. Special meeting 24 hours before, and, and the time and location of the meeting has to be provided. Situations where you can add non-agenda items. The first one is unexpected need for immediate action. This council has done that on rare occasion, when something comes to your attention after the posting of the agenda, and there's an urgent need to take action, and you vote by a two-thirds vote, which is four of the five, that there is that need for immediate action, then that matter can be added to the agenda. Or if we have an emergency situation, I don't think we've ever had one of those here. We have? Oh, where we took action on a non-agenda item. Oh, okay. Well, your young memory is better than mine. Or the action was continued from a previously agendized meeting less than five days earlier. So the general rule, no action or discussion on any item not appearing on the agenda. And there are these exceptions, which we talk about on occasion, so it doesn't hurt to, to go through them again. Even though not agendized, you can ask a question for clarification, you can make a brief announcement, a brief report on your own activities. Provide a reference to staff for resources or factual information, ask that staff bring a report back, or direct staff to place an item on a future agenda. Those are all perfectly fine. Okay. So back to some more public participation.
Going back to that last one, sorry, Diane.
That's okay.
So again, the exceptions, so we say on his own initiative or in response to a quite, this is part of council communication? Is this, that includes council communication essentially?
Yes.
So under council communication, again, is to ask a question for clarification from staff. If you have an announcement, you want some type of announcement, some type of event, make it brief. You have a report of your own activities, make, obviously, that's brief. Provide a reference to staff or other resources for factual information. Request staff to report back to the body on a, at a future meeting, or request to place an item on agenda for the next meeting, basically.
Yes.
That's, that's our limitation as far as council communication.
Correct.
Got it? Thank you.
And that's, again, taken straight, directly from a statute. So what I should mention here too, is that's why, again, it's best to not engage in a response or discussion with a comment, a public comment speaker on non-agenda items. It's different if they're talking about an item on the agenda. So closed sessions, these are exceptions, obviously, to the open meeting, personnel matters, conference with labor negotiators, conference with legal counsel regarding pending or potential litigation, and to instruct negotiators on real property transactions. So confidentiality of closed session communications, that's, that's very important. Confidential information means any communication made in a closed session that is specifically related to the basis for the council's meeting in closed session. So to the extent that that information is related to the attorney-client privilege, the holder of the privilege is the council as a collective body, and the privilege can be waived only by a majority of the council. So if, if a council member divulges information about a closed session involving pending litigation, that's a violation of the Brown Act, because the council itself has not waived the attorney-client And the council may seek prohibition of disclosure of confidential information by seeking injunctive relief to prevent the disclosure. That's kind of hard to do, because usually, it's been disclosed, so trying to get an injunction that it not be disclosed is kind of after the fact. But the council can refer a member of the council who's disclosed confidential information to the grand jury. Penalties can invalidate action taken. It can be a criminal misdemeanor if the member was in attendance at the meeting and the action was taken, whether or not the member participated. Civil action for injunction, court-ordered taping of closed sessions, and then attorney's fees and costs are always a possibility if someone successfully brings an action that the council violated the Brown Act. So that's my presentation, so if anyone has any other-
Yeah, closed session, one question. When we mean closed session, and we vote an item in closed session, obviously, we're supposed to come out of closed session, announce the council has made it, has taken any action, and this is the vote, 3-2 vote, and these are the members?
It, it depends on, on the nature of the item, whether that was the final action, whether you've directed staff to negotiate with, with a, a bargaining group or some, we wouldn't announce that.
Yeah, we don't announce that, but if it was a final action, the council, I assume doesn't go to, it's not going in an open session. It stops with the, it stops with the council in closed session, it took an action, there was a vote taken.
Yes.
I assume that gets announced out of closed session, what that vote was, and who, who were the affirmative votes and the negative votes.
Well, if, if that's the final action.
Yeah. Yeah, or it's, or if it's everybody, be unanimously approved by the council.
It, yes, it can. Again, it's going to depend on what we fall under and-
Yeah.
-where we're at in the process. True.
Okay. All right. Mayor Protemna Martinez.
A few questions. Do we as council members have any responsibility with respect to Brown Act reporting if we see a Brown Act violation? Do we have any affirmative requirements to notify our council members that they violated the Brown Act, or to otherwise let anyone know?
I'm not aware of any affirmative requirement.
Okay. And then, on page 14, I want to raise this, just because it comes up pretty frequently. So the last paragraph says, "A council member should not direct staff to initiate any action, change a course of action, or prepare any report, nor shall a council member initiate any project meeting or study without the approval of the city manager or a majority of council at a properly noticed meeting." Is, is this directly stated in the Brown Act? I was looking for it, and I couldn't find it, or is this in case law interpretation? Do you know?
Well, it, it's the form of governance that we have that vests the authority in the city manager. And I guess I would direct you to the, the code section. Where it says, "The city manager takes his orders from the council members sitting as a collective body."
Okay. And that also goes hand in hand with my other question about page 43. Sorry, I'm bouncing all over the place. Oh, thank you. Actually, 42 and 43. So, so 42, the exception to discussion on a not, non-agenda item is that a council or individual council member may request staff to report back to the body at a subsequent meeting concerning any matter. And often, we'll have residents ask questions at the meeting that we might have someone here that can respond to, and, you know, maybe the police chief will come up to the podium and, and respond briefly. Is that appropriate? Is that something that we should be waiting until the next meeting to address?
Yes, a brief response is probably fine on that, but any, any lengthy detailed report, I think, should be brought back. Again, one of the reasons is staff isn't, doesn't, isn't always, not that the chief in your example isn't prepared or knows what's going on, but I think the better practice is to bring that back.
Okay. I think that was all my questions. Thank you.
Anybody else? Everybody's quiet? How about the commissioners? No? Commissioners are good? Guys, guys know the Brown Act? Okay. All right. Huh? Basic, yeah. I think, I think the real goal here is the public has to write to know and has a right to comment on city business. And so at the, at the end of the day, it's all about, takes place in this room in Moncler, we got to put it on the agenda, so the public knows what we're doing, they can come here or communicate somehow to us of their inquiry or their, or their beliefs. So one of the things that I got going again is the policy manual for the city council. I know we were working on one, and then it kind of died off, and with our new council member Mendez decided to get that going again. So that will be coming to you here soon. We'll give you a draft of it, so everybody can take it home, take a look at it, and at a future meeting, we'll have a discussion and action on it. So with that, we are now adjourned.